Counselor Capone.
Yeah.
Counselor Dalla Sola.
Here.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Here.
Counselor Hamlin.
Here.
Counselor McGonigal.
Here.
Counselor McKinnon.
Here.
Counselor Palatano.
Here.
Counselor Sichetta.
Here.
Counselor Sani.
Here.
Counselor Simonelli.
Yeah.
Counselor Marquesi.
Here.
All of your members present, Mr. President.
We have a call, please raise and salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the general public which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Counselor Capone.
Yeah.
Counselor Dalla Sola.
Here.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Here.
Counselor Hamlin.
Here.
Counselor McGonigal.
Here.
Counselor McKinnon.
Here.
Counselor Palatano.
Here.
Counselor Sichetta.
Here.
Counselor Sani.
Here.
Counselor Simonelli.
Yeah.
All of your members present, Mr. President.
We have a call, please raise and salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the general public which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to open this up to a public hearing.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Much may it be in second to open to a public hearing. At this time, anybody in the audience will be able to come up here and discuss tonight's budget. If you'd like, do we have a sign-in sheet?
I think I can do the presentation.
When we open the presentation?
Presentation is impeded.
No.
Notice is hereby given that a public... Notice is hereby given that a public hearing will be held on Ever City Council, 6:00 p.m. Monday, to conduct a public hearing on the proposed operating budget submitted by the mayor and annual appropriation bill.
That is known here.
Is nobody on the sign-in sheet, Mr. Chairman?
At this time, I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? At this time, can we invite Mr. Piscay to give his presentation? Much may it be in second to have Mr. Piscay come before us and show his presentation.
Thank you, councilors and members of the audience. Present to you fiscal year '15 operating budget overview. PowerPoint presentation, I gave you all copies on your desk. There's some handouts up on the back table if anyone like a copy. In summary, the general fund total operating budget for fiscal year '15 is $154,448... $154,448,765 dollars. I've broken into three categories. We have the city, we have the schools, and we have the fixed costs, which a city and school combined fixed costs. We also have the water enterprise fund, which you've already adopted back in March. That will leave a total operating budget of $169,710,440. Proposed operating budget key factors. So general government, we continue to improve delivery of services through organizational restructuring and technological advances. Public safety, the focus is on more police and firefighters. Education, we've committed to first-class public school education. There is some reorganization of departments and savings and solid waste collection disposal in your city services budget. From a collective bargaining perspective, we're working toward an affordable and mutually beneficial accord with our respective labor unions. And with fixed costs, we're always trying to control costs, implementing and adhering to debt and capital improvement policies as part of our capital improvement plan. Now, we maintain an aggressive funding schedule for our pension obligation that should be funded by 2030. And that's about it for key factors. Happy to answer any questions as they come up, the council, just let me know. Salt me, raise your hand.
Mr. Piscay, if I may, excuse me, I'd like to entertain any questions from the board first.
Mr. Chairman, I have one question.
Counselor Hamlin.
Through you to our assessor, Mr. Tose. Collective bargaining spot, is there any money that has been placed off to the side in this budget for any future raises?
Yes, there's a $400,000 salary reserve account in the mayor's budget for fiscal year '15 collective bargaining.
That for the whole city or just collective bargaining people?
It's for the entire city. It's a salary reserve account, so it's not exclusive to a bargaining unit or units. It's a salary reserve for any and all. There is a salary survey being done for administrative and management positions, so... And then we also have collective bargaining. All of our agreements end on June 30th of 2014. We are in the process of negotiating with all the unions. We've had various meetings with various unions at this point, but we haven't finalized any contracts for fiscal year '15.
And what that was, you said that was in the mayor's budget?
The $400,000 salary reserve line item in the mayor's budget.
Thank you.
Counselor McKinnon.
Thank you, Mr. President. To Mr. Piscay, through you. The enterprise fund, the water and sewer, is that supposed to be self-funding?
It is self-funding, yes, and it is self-funding, correct.
Okay, now...
When I walk through it, I'll show you the mechanics of it, but it is self-funding.
Okay, are we currently up to date on that funding?
We're currently up to date, as a matter of fact. Through 11 months, we've reached our goal of revenues for fiscal year '14, so we are... We're having a very good year for water and sewer enterprise fund. It'll be the first year we actually have a positive retained earnings for... It's basically free cash for the enterprise fund, it's called retained earnings, and you'll see that in the fall of 2015 fiscal year.
Alright, so that will be coming back in fiscal year 2015.
Department of Revenue certifies both our free cash for general fund and our retained earnings for our enterprise fund. So in the past, we've had positive free cash, but we've had negative retained earnings. But this year, this year we've...
Is that why it looked like it was going in the red?
It was in the red.
It was in the red?
Yes.
Okay.
This will be the first year it's in the black.
Okay. And that was, in which year was that?
Our current, yeah, we'll be in the black, because I know as of right now, we've already reached our revenue estimate. So we're in the black for fiscal year '14, but you won't see the official certification of those funds until we close our books on June 30th. We submit them to the Department of Revenue, and they give us back our certification. So you'll see that in the fall, right around when we get our free cash.
Thank you very much.
Counselor Simonelli.
Thank you, Mr. President. To Mr. Piscay, through you. Mr. Piscay, can you tell me exactly how much the budget was last year and how much did it increase this year?
I don't know if I have slides in this presentation for that. I only got this PowerPoint, but I'm happy to get you that information.
How much roughly did it go up from last year? Must have an idea.
It's hard to say at this point, let's see here. Yeah, I mean, it's up about 5 percent, counselor, but I don't have the exact numbers. I mean, that's something I could probably get you after the meeting.
Five percent, how much went into layman's terms, what is 5 percent?
If I go through this presentation, it might answer some of the questions for you. I have some numbers in here.
What we should do is let Mr. Piscay do his presentation. These questions can be asked later at any time during the budget, okay? Mr. Piscay?
Sure, sure. Okay, so, just an overview. Basically, a balanced budget, revenues equal expenditures, that's my goal. I gotta make sure that all the expenditures that are being contemplated as part of the budget process, we have revenues to back those up. So cities' revenues fall into these categories. We have the tax levy, we have local receipts, we have state aid, we have other financing sources, and we have enterprise fund revenue. And that's the way these slides are laid out. So here's your tax levy. Last year, the tax levy limit was $90,385,742. Department of Revenue allows you to add 2.5 percent onto that limit, $2.25 million. The assessors are estimating new growth in the city to be $1 million. So for budgeting purposes, we're estimating that we should have a tax levy limit of $93,645,000. Now again, the fiscal year '15 levy limit's an estimate. New growth is approved by the Department of Revenue sometime in November. And the new growth is submitted by the assessing department to the Department of Revenue, and it goes through their vetting, and they'll give us what new growth is. And basically, the tax levy limit is the maximum amount that the city can raise through property taxes. So based upon my estimates, we should be able to raise $93.6 million in taxes without going over our levy limit. In fiscal year '14, the limit was $90,385,742, like I said before. That was based upon our primary levy limit was 2.5 percent of our full and fair cash value. For '15, we're estimating that our values in the city are gonna go up 4 percent. That's the hope. If that's the case, the city's levy limit would be $93.6 million, as I said. And the levy ceiling at 4 percent increase would be $94 million. So we're hoping that we're out of this levy ceiling situation as part of fiscal year '15 certification of our values. But again, this, we'll know more about this in November. So basically, I just took 144 percent of last year's tax levy to come up with that 94 million. So for this budget, the estimated tax levy would be $90,242,488. That leaves us $3.6 million below the levy limit. So basically, the city has excess capacity of $3.6 million based upon this budget, meaning we could tax and spend $3.6 million more, but we haven't at this point. Estimated tax levy is $90 million. However, the tax levy could be reduced further this fall depending on how our new growth comes in, how our local receipts come in when we close the books, and if we decide to use any other financing sources to lower taxes. Last year, you may recall, we used the $1 million of free cash. We used $650,000 of parking revenues to lower the tax levy. We haven't contemplated that as part of the budget as presented, but we can certainly do that in the fall before we send in our recap to the Department of Revenue for final certification. So again, these are all estimated numbers right now. I call this the fake budget, and then when we submit a recap to the DOO office certification, that's pretty much your true budget when that's finalized. So that was tax levy, this is local receipts. We estimate $7.365 million in local receipts. We budget conservative estimates based upon fiscal year '14. So we kinda look at how we've been in the past couple of years, and we'll estimate our local receipts. For fiscal year '15, I just level funded all of our estimates, and I basically, I just decreased $263,000 because $263,000 was miscellaneous non-recurring revenues. So I'm not gonna budget miscellaneous non-recurring revenues because of the nature of those that they are non-recurring. So take out the non-recurring revenues and level fund our other estimated revenues, we're looking at $7.1 million for fiscal year '15. State aid, that's our cherry sheet money. Last year, we received $62.3 million. Lion's share of that is chapter 70 money that goes to the schools. UGA, that's an acronym for unrestricted general government aid. Used to be the old lottery money, the old additional assistance money, they combined that to call it UGA. Then we got charter school, and our other revenues make up $62.3 million. For fiscal year '15, those numbers go up to $68.1 million. Basically, an increase of $5.8 million in state aid for fiscal year '15. Other financing sources, so like I said earlier, the mayor used $1.65 million last year to reduce the tax levy. Million dollars from free cash, $650,000 from parking department appropriations from the receipt reserve account. As part of this budget, there's no orders to use free cash or parking receipts at this time, but we have, until we submit our recap to the DOO, to contemplate if and when we're gonna choose to do that for fiscal year '15. This slide basically says what I just said. $1.65 million in '14, 0.15 at this point. Then you have your enterprise funds. $14.5 million of revenue is estimated for '14. We've collected just about $15 million already for fiscal year '14, so we're half a million dollars above our estimate, so that's good news. We had no rate adjustments last year. And we've basically, we're gonna have turnbacks in the expenditure lines. We're not over budget on the expenditure line, so if you have half a million dollars more in revenues and you have expenditures online, one would say that you're gonna close with positive retained earnings. We'll know that in the fall. For fiscal year '15, however, we need $15.8 million. And the rate, the expenditures go up because of all the capital projects that are done and all the assessments from the MWR rate. So doing some math, working with city services director, working with some outside consultants, looking at our rate structure. We're gonna be recommended a 9 percent water and sewer rate increase for fiscal year '15 to keep up with these fixed costs.
Excuse me, 9 percent?
Nine. So I know it sounds high, and I just wanted to put it in perspective for everybody, though. We get an annual MWR rate, annual rate survey for all the communities that are in the MWR rate. And just to show you, the city of Everett, based upon 90,000 gallons of use, pays $854 a year. Boston pays $1,200, Cambridge pays $1,360, Chelsea pays $1,450, and so on and so forth. So not that that matters to anybody in Everett, but the point of this slide is just to show everybody that historically, the city's water and sewer rates have been very low. And I suspect that was because in the past, it was combined with the general fund, and no one really extracted out the costs of running the water and sewer enterprise fund. So a lot of the tax dollars were subsidized in the water and sewer operations. As you know, they turned it into a 2012, it's now an enterprise fund. We've been in a negative position for two years. This will be actually the first year we're in a positive position where all the revenues of the water and sewer department will cover both direct and indirect costs for fiscal year '14. However, with the fixed costs in fiscal year '15, there's gonna be needs of adjustment, and again, the recommendation is 9 percent. That's before the city services commission for their deliberation. That's the revenue side, so now it's the expenditure side. Expenses of the city are broken into following categories. You have basically city expenses, general government, public safety, public works, human services, culture recreation. You have your fixed costs, debt service, education, enterprise fund, state assessments, and all the financing uses. So city expenses, without any fixed costs in there, 38.6 million versus 40.4 million for fiscal year '15. Second slide would be the schools. Fiscal year '14 budget, $65.4 million. We supplemented that budget last month with $871,000 appropriation. Total adjusted budget for the schools would be $66.2 million. Mayor's recommending a budget of $71.2 million for fiscal year '15. That's a 7.4 percent increase, or 4.9 million from the '14 budget. Increase is primarily funded through chapter 70 dollars from the state. However, there is a formula that the cities, that the Department of Education and secondary, elementary and secondary education, DC, used to be DOE, they come up with a formula that says, this is what the city is required to spend on the schools, it's the minimum net school spending. And that number was increased by $1 million as part of the proposed package. So basically, minimum net school spending plus $1 million is what the mayor's recommending for the schools for fiscal year '15. And that money is to go toward additional teachers to help with the increase in enrollment. Fixed costs, so your fixed costs are primarily your big three, your health insurance, your retirement, and your debt service. Then you have some other things like unemployment, workers' compensation, Medicare tax, property and casualty insurance, and all other. $40.6 million in fiscal year '14, $42.8 million in fiscal year '15, an increase of $2.2 million. Most of the increase is due to debt service of all the bonds we sold and the debt payments that are coming along with that. And then health insurance went up 3 percent, and pension obligation goes up per this funding schedule of the actuary, so... Those are the big three. Now you got your water and sewer expenses, $14 million in '14, $15.2 million in '15. Again, you'll see the biggest increase here is your MWR assessments is up around $400,000. Debt service is up about $700,000. Salary and expenses are more or less flat, they go up a little bit. State aid, we get state revenue in, but we also have to send money back to the state. Last year, they assessed us $10.2 million. Fiscal year '15 estimated assessment's gonna be $10.9 million. Broken down into three basic categories. State assessment, $2.0 million last year, $2.1 million this year. Primarily retired teachers' health insurance. Retired teachers are funded through the GIC. The GIC pays for those costs, for the retired teachers, and they assess us those costs. Transportation authority assessments, $2.7 million. That's level, that's pretty much the cost the MBTA gives us for running buses and MBTA service through the city. And then tuition assessments, $5.6 million, $5.6 million. That's basically what we're assessed for any children that go to charter schools versus every public school, so... And last is other expenses, snow and ice deficit overlay, and then other amounts to be raised. Last year, we had about $600,000 snow and ice deficit, this year, we're looking at about $500,000 deficit. Overlay, $2 million last year, $1.7 this year. Supplemental appropriations are zero at this point for fiscal year '15, because you'll see those after, you know, the budget's adopted. Then as we do business throughout the year, you'll see supplemental appropriations, whether it's from reserve accounts and et cetera, et cetera, so... The $6.8 million in fiscal year '14 was primarily due to funding stabilization, funding any kind of reserve accounts that we put money away for, and any other supplemental appropriations for the school and whatnot. So just other things to consider. That's basically the revenue and expense portion of the presentation. Just some thoughts on things to consider. The gaming license, no revenues or expenditures have been contemplated to use as in the fiscal year '15 budget, nor have they been used as part of the financial forecast. And I'm not, I'm not contemplating any money from a potential gaming license at this point, so there's no hedging. We're not balancing our budget based upon, you know, money that may or may not come in. So everything you have before you with regard to forecasting and regard to budget has, gaming license is not contemplated at all. I thought that was important. We have a tax agreement with the power plant that ends in 2020. It's at $15 million a year. We're back into the value, kinda has an adverse effect on the levy, as you may know. It's a little complicated to describe it, but basically, they pay us $15 million. We know what the commercial tax rate is, we back into a value. If that tax rate is $40, and we back into $15 million, you got a value for the power plant. It's an artificial value, and in 2020, that deal goes away, and we can start taxing on what they're actually worth, so... There might be some potential modification of that agreement as we look at this, we got six years left. Whether they wanna have a big spike up in 2020, or they wanna maybe look to kinda smooth that out, that's something that the administration's contemplating, seeing if there's any options on that. OPEB liability, $145 million. That's basically saying, that's the cost of any insurance for active and retired employees from now until the last person passes away at this very point. We started a trust up before '14, we funded $775,000. That's good news, because bond rating agencies, Department of Revenue, they're all looking for the nearest values to stop addressing this liability. The pension liability's been addressed, there's actually laws that say we have to fund it, OPEB is probably gonna be the next thing. Proactively, we funded the trust, and going forward, we have mechanisms and our financial policies to keep funding that on a year-to-year basis using free cash, a percentage of free cash on a year-to-year basis. So last year, we were talking about establishing this trust. This year, we talked about, we've established it, we funded it, now going forward, we gotta try to plug a way at it. Pension liability is $115.7 million. That's for our PARAC actuary, that's... PARAC is the state agency that oversees all the retirement boards with 38 percent funded, which isn't very good, but we're very aggressively funding that to be complete by 2030. So the state allows you to fund that liability up until the year 2040. So every city and town has to have a schedule that's fully funded the pension by 2040. We're on a 2030 timeframe, so we have 10 years of play if we ever wanted to try to adjust that, but we're putting 12.5 million in as part of fiscal year '15 budget, which is significant, but it's also very good, because the more money we put towards that, you'll see this funded schedule close gradually from year to year. Health insurance for the fiscal year '15 budget, it's an $18.2 million budget item. That's all your actives and all your retirees. So health and retirement's $31 million in fiscal year '15, it's about 18 percent of the general budget. So in summary, we have a balanced budget, responsibly balanced, $3.5 million worth of excess capacity if we ever need it to, we can tap into. We've established some new stabilization accounts, and we're adhering to the financial policies that we've brought before you as part of the budget. We got a bond rating increase to double A this year, and that's helping us save on our long-term borrowing costs. Multi-year capital improvement plans, comprehensive enterprise fund budget forecasting will allow the city to project what obstacles may lie ahead and plan the optimal way for future financial liabilities and to restore fiscal balances needed. And that is my presentation.
Mr. Piscay, thank you very much. Before he leaves, anything that he may have discussed that you don't understand, while he's here, ask the question. Don't stay it long, if you see something here you don't understand, ask him now, and this way, you know, it'll be that much better when we're doing the individual departments. So if anybody has any questions of Mr. Piscay, Mr. Hamlin?
Not really, Mr. Chairman, but I think we might have done something a little bit backwards here, because this is supposed to be a public hearing on the...
We did the public hearing.
No, no, on the proposed budget. But nobody knows what the proposed budget was until afterwards presented. So I think that we need to, just to be on the safe side, reopen the public hearing, which I'd like to make a motion for.
Second motion.
Okay. The motion to open to a public hearing is made, all in favor? I oppose at this time. If anybody has something they don't understand, then go and ask Mr. Piscay. Make a brief and one quick question. Counselor McKinnon.
Mr. Piscay, through you, Mr. President, Mr. Piscay. Personal liability is just a real quick question, 38 percent funded, where is the funding coming to or from to fund that?
It's coming from tax levy, local receipts, cherry sheets, it's all part of the revenues that come in, so the appropriation is in there. Say where it's coming from, it's coming from revenues that come into the city. It's not as if property taxes are earmarked for that, and state aid is earmarked for something else, but basically, it's a, the revenues that come in need to support the expenditures out, and it's just all part of the general fund operating budget. I don't know if that answered your question, but it's...
My next question is, well, how much are we going to be expending per year to get to the goal that we need to receive?
Rough numbers, it goes up about half a million dollars a year until 2030. So last year was $12 million, this year's $12.5, next year will be $13, $13.5. Every two years, we get an actuarial study. If the market performs well, it helps shrink that liability. If the market performs poorly, it increases that liability. We assume an 8 percent return on our money. All the money for the retirement is in what's called the PRT. It's the Public Reserve Investment Trust, it's managed by the Commonwealth, so all of our money, let's say there's $100 million of city money, it goes to the PRT trust fund.
Counselor McKinnon?
Mr. Viskey, uh, through you, Mr. President, Mr. Viskey, personal liability is, just a real quick question, thirty-eight percent funded, where is the funding coming to or from to fund that?
It's coming from, um, tax levy, local receipts, cherry sheets, it's, it's, it's all part of the revenues that come in, so the appropriation is in there. Let's say where it's coming from, it's coming from revenues that come into the city. It's not as if property taxes are earmarked for that, and state aid is earmarked for something else, but basically, it's a, the revenues that come in need to support the expenditures out, and it's just all part of the, the general fund operating budget. I don't know if that answers your question, but it's-
My next question is, well, how much are we going to be expending per year to get to the goal that we need to receive?
Rough numbers, it goes up about a half a million dollars a year until twenty thirty. So, last year was twelve million, this year's twelve and a half, next year'll be thirteen, thirteen and a half. Every two years, we get an actuarial study. If the market performs well, it helps shrink that liability. If the market performs poorly, it increases that liability. We assume a eight percent return on our money. All the money for the retirement is in what's called the PRT, it's the Public Reserve Investment Trust, it's managed by the Commonwealth, so. All of our money, let's say there's a hundred million dollars of city money, it goes to the PRT trust fund, and when the actuaries do their studies, they're assuming that we're gonna get eight percent on that. So hopefully, the hundred million this year will be a hundred and eight next year, it'll be a hundred and sixteen the year after, and so on, and so on.
Thank you very much. Counselor Capone?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you to Mr. Viskey. Touching on that question, I think, first of all, I think it was very wise for us to start funding it, because it's not something that's gonna go away, it's something we need to address at some point. My question's gonna be, are we looking at fixed percentages, or is it just gonna inch up, like you said, about a half a million a year, trying to close the gap on it?
On the pension liability?
On, on pension liability and on the O P B liability.
Well, on the pension liability, we're, we're bound to a schedule right now, so we have, they'll calculate what our unfunded liability is, and then they, based upon funding it to be fully funded by twenty thirty-
Right.
They back into the number. So at this point, it looks, I believe it goes up about three point eight percent a year, three point nine percent a year at the current funding schedule.
Okay.
Although, when we do our next actuarial study, that could change, we could shrink years off it, we could add years to it, it all depends on when we wanna fund it, well, the retirement board actually sets that schedule, but a lot of times, you have to make sure that you're working with the city, because there's only two component units of the retirement system, ninety-six percent of it is the city, and four percent is the housing authority, so.
Okay.
Whatever number we come up with for a funding schedule, the city's picking up ninety-six percent of it each and every year.
Okay.
At this point, the half a million dollars each year is certainly attainable, it's, uh, it's able to be funded, and the current schedule is fine to have us funded by twenty thirty.
All right. And on the enterprise fund, did I hear you say that this year, obviously, we're looking to be in the black, you've, you've already got the revenue out of eleven, out of twelve months, did you say it was half a million that we're at? You think, you believe it to be retained earnings?
We're, we're, we have a half million dollars more revenue than we budgeted, and we have one month left, so.
Okay, so it'd be more than that, you would think, you would think.
No, that's something's wrong.
Okay. And then the last question I have for you is, in the summary section, you have the double A bond rating. For the benefit of the folks at home, could you explain what the rating system is, and where we fall in that as a double A rating?
Sure, it goes, um, A, triple A is the best, and there's, uh, tr, there's two rating systems, there's Standard and Poor's, and there's Moody's, I'll use Standard and Poor's, so.
Is that what you have on here, is the-
Yeah, this is Standard and Poor's, I should, and that was part of the presentation I gave when we did the summary of the, the city's condition, so, let me just reference that while I have it here. So Standard and Poor has assigned a double A rating to the city, triple A's the best, and it goes, uh, one down from triple A, I think it's triple A minus, then double A plus, then double A, then double A minus, then it goes single A plus, single A, and double A's actually is, is good as we've seen it here in the city for a while. If you look at our comparable cities, you know, there's not a lot of double A cities that look like us, and basically, when they gave us that rating, and they said that we have strong budgetary flexibility, eleven and a half percent of our reserves, eleven and a half percent of our general budget is in reserves, so we have eleven percent to offset any kind of unforeseen extraordinary expenditures, so that's pretty good. We have strong liquidity, we have, they consider us a good financial management and strong management condition, strong debt and contingency liability profile, and strong institutional framework, so, um, they've had some pretty good stuff to say about us with regard to that.
I have no further questions, thank you.
Counselor Semenelli?
Thank you, Mr. President, through you to Mr. Viskey. Again, I just wanted to ask you the same question I asked you earlier about, you say it, the tax rate from last year went up about roughly five percent?
No, tax rate, we, we won't know what the fiscal year fifteen tax rate is until December.
You have no idea exactly how much it's gonna, the increase from last year to this year?
I don't know-
I believe he's talking about the total budget for one fifty, he said seven percent, so it'd be one fifty-seven point five.
Yeah, but people don't know exactly, I mean, I'm not a math major here, you know.
All right, according to the five-year forecast, last year was a hundred and seventy-eight point five million dollars of expenditures, this year it's a hundred and eighty-two point nine, so, let's call that a four point four million dollar increase in the budget.
That's all I want, the, the people know that, okay, thank you.
Counselor Sichella.
Yes, Mr. Viskey, on the revenues, on the local receipts, could you tell me, not approximately, what is that? Is it parking, excise tax, and all that sort of stuff?
Yes, and yes, it's, uh, motor vehicle excise is a big one, miles tax excise is big, license and permits, fines, um-
Okay.
Investment income, it's all stuff of that matter, pretty much when you do business in the city, and you pay a permit fee, a license fee, an excise tax, that's all part of local receipts.
Very good, thank you.
You're welcome.
Counselor Del Solo?
Quick question, on the double A bond for double A, what were we last year at the budget? Were we double A also?
We're double A three, which would be double A minus and Standard and Poor's. We got a one, one-
We went up one level.
Yes.
We went up one level.
Yes.
And the year before that, do you recall what that is? Hate to put you in the spot, but.
I think we were double A three for a while, I don't know much before that, I can get a little history, but I know we were double A three, or double A minus, and with our last bond rating, when we sold our bonds, we went up to a double A, so, we got a, one, one notch up on, on the list there, which is, is encouraging, and it doesn't happen as often as you may think, it's a pretty involved process, conference calls, go over all your financials with the financial advisor and the bond rating agency, so, um, yeah, it was, it was definitely farther than the city's cap to get that upgrade.
Okay, thank you.
Any more questions? If not, I have just one, uh, just regarding the revenue.
I have a couple of questions.
Oh. Counselor Hamlin?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think I missed at the end of what the Counselor Semenelli said, and I'm gonna ask you, I have been seeing and reading that we have a budget of a hundred and eighty-two million dollars, is any truth to that matter? I mean, just, 'cause it was in the newspaper, everybody's talking about it, a hundred and eighty-two million dollars, I'd like to tell people that, no, that's not true, that the budget's really a hundred and sixty-nine million.
Okay. Well, that's good.
Well, I mean, is it true, the hundred and sixty-nine million is the-
Well, you also, you're basically, there's one part of this that's called other expenditures, and I went through that slide, your other expenses are your snow and ice deficit, and your overlay, and your cherry sheet assessments is ten point nine million, so, again, you can, I try to give a consistent answer, you are right, a hundred and sixty-nine point seven million dollars is the total of city, school, and enterprise fund, and then you have these other expenditures, and gives you a grand total, so, for my budget, a hundred and eighty-two point nine million dollars out, a hundred and eighty-two point nine million dollars in.
Okay.
Some of that is part of cherry sheet assessments, that, the assessments from the state, you're not necessarily seeing as part of the number you are using, but it is part of what I would consider part of the budget.
Okay. And I have another question, too, and that is that you had indicated that the, I asked you about the collective bargaining, you said it was four hundred thousand dollars, and it was in the mayor's budget, was that in the mayor's office, or was it in the to, someplace in the total budget?
Part of the mayor's budget in fiscal year fourteen and fiscal, it was part of fourteen, it's also part of fifteen.
So that's on his pages?
Yes.
I couldn't find it.
Yeah, it, it should be in there, I don't have my budget in front of me, but I'll, I'll find it for you.
Good, I'd like to, 'cause I don't see a four hundred thousand dollar amount here, okay.
Check the second page.
Nope, uh, no, I'm on the second page.
It's like category four. I'm sorry, I don't have it in front of me, but I, I-
All right, you can show it to me later, but I don't have it on either pages, but anyway.
Page three, I'm, I'm told.
Page three.
On what section there?
In the, in the mayor's budget, so if you go to tab sixteen, I believe it is?
I only have two pages for the mayor's budget.
Page three on tab sixteen, special purposes reserve fund, mayors recommended four hundred thousand dollars.
And what tab is it under?
Sixteen.
Beginning of that tab. It's the third page, page three. Yep, there you go.
I'm sorry, I know many of you think that it's cumbersome, the paging and the numbering, and it is, and we're trying to get better at it.
I'm trying to find things, you know, you don't know where they are, so, um, I have another question, too, I want to ask you. On the revenues, just on page three of your, your passout, um, you talk about estimated new growth?
Yes.
Um, if I were to will the city twenty-five thousand dollars a year, not that I'm going to, but if I were, would that go into the estimated new growth? Is that where you would see that?
No, that, that would have nothing to do with new growth, that would be some kind of trust account, just set up as a trust-
Okay.
And someone would trust the city money, the council would adopt and say, yes, we accept that money-
Okay.
And then some might say, twenty-five thousand principal can never be expended, they can only expend the interest, and whatever the terms are, council has to adopt the, the, it's just like any kind of gift, they would have to accept it, and then we'd spend it for your last wishes.
Okay, well, that, that was my, 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 my question is to, is to ask, if, if that does happen, does that in any way affect the tax levy?
No.
So it would be just stuck in an account someplace?
Yes.
Okay, okay. I have one other question, and that relates to, we talked about the enterprise, I have two questions, I'm sorry, we talked about the enterprise funds, and my question was, which we, we talked about like twenty years ago, are the enterprise funds payment by the landlord tax deductible?
Yeah, I would imagine on their statement of income and expenses for rental real estate, yes.
'Cause I had always, I always thought that water is not a tax deductible item.
Not if you, some people like to let it, some people like to let it lean to their tax bill, and they pay it, and then they can itemize it, but it's not legal for all you out there, but a lot of people do it anyway.
Okay.
But when it's an income fraud, but you can write off as part of income expenses.
Okay. And on page eight, which we talked about the school department, it says, as part of the two thousand fifteen budget, the mayor's opposing an additional one million for additional teachers-
Yes.
-to help with the increasing enrollment. Did the school, why, why did the school ask for that?
Why didn't the school ask for it?
Yeah, why, why isn't that in the school department's budget, that one million dollars?
Well, they, they, their budget came forward based upon the minimum net school spending requirement, that's historically been used in the city, and, um, in past years, it seems like they come subsequent to passing of the budget to ask for more money.
Right.
The school department and the mayor, and the financial people got together and thought it'd be a good idea to try to fully fund them upfront, so that we wouldn't have to come back and ask for more money, so, it's either pay me now or pay me later in some respects, but, and, and quite honestly, the schools have shown a need that they need that money, and they have a lot more after me, and so, you know, even though the, the minimum net school spending is the minimum we can fund the schools, if you look historically, we've, we've always been over that number, but it usually comes in the form of a supplemental appropriation halfway through the year. If we give them this money now, they have a better opportunity to plan for the, for the summer and for the following school starts.
It must, it must be recorded someplace or somehow in a law or something that says we can do that? We can, we can give a gift to the school of a million dollars?
Well, I wouldn't call it a gift, this, this is the mayor's budget, so the mayor can put forward whatever he wants, as long as it's balanced. All we're required to do is do a minimum net school spending.
What I mean, he's giving somebody a million dollars that never asked for it.
The mayor can give as much money to any budget as he wants. I can request a hundred thousand, he can say, I think you deserve three hundred thousand, and put it in his budget, not that that happened.
Okay, okay.
So why do we have a budget, then?
All right, thank you, thank you, that's it, thank you.
This is the mayor's budget, this is the mayor's recommended budget.
Counselor Capone, do you have another question?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'll make it, I'll make it brief. I know we have a copy, it's an issue that we've talked about at City Hall, and I know that some of the councils have a similar concern, I have received phone calls from the general public that they can't find the budget online. I know we've got a hard copy in the library, and we have a hard copy downstairs, I think you had mentioned that salaries and, did you say appropriations are online right now?
Well, this, on this particular budget, we, we, I think there was a, there was a snafu delay, the operating budget and all the salary spreadsheets are online now. What isn't online is every other tab that you have, but we could certainly get that on there, but we thought, uh, first and foremost, we want-
Was that today? Because of, as of last night, I couldn't find it.
It was today, it was today.
So it's today?
Yes.
And, does it stand out, so that when a resident is going online, they'll be able to access it easily enough?
As the clerk, the clerk. Yeah, there's an icon on the front page.
Okay, very good.
Just look at the two dot twenty fifteen budget.
Thank you, that way the people at home can catch up the numbers of what we're talking about.
Just closing, a quick question. Chapter seventy money is what percentage of the actual spending for school spending?
Well, let's see, if it's sixty, sixty point six million in the school budget, the one thing you, you won't see in the school budget here is, um, hold on, let me go back to the school budget. So when we recommend seventy-one point two million dollars for a school budget, that's just the part that you'd see appropriated. Now, there's around eighteen million dollars of money within the general fund budget that is attributed to the schools, the health insurance costs, the pension costs, et cetera. I believe that number's around eighty-six million off the top of my head, so, if chapter seventy is sixty million, would that be about three, three quarters of the money coming from the state?
Three quarters, buddy?
Yeah, we pay about twenty-three million.
Okay, now, for instance, if we appropriate that one million dollars into the budget, would we save money instead of just handing over the one million the way the mayor's doing it through the budget? I mean, at the total budget, and we get a certain percentage back, obviously, from chapter seventy, so if that one million dollars which we're appropriating from the mayor's fund was given prior to it, would we have saved, you know, sixty, seventy percent of that million dollars?
No, 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 the, the million dollars is above and beyond all the calculations, so basically, they, they, they take that, uh, chapter seventy money consideration when they come up with that net school spending minimum.
Yeah.
So we couldn't, no, we couldn't have got a seventy percent subsidy on that, I wish, but no.
Okay, and the second one, which, this was my last question, tax levy, you said was ninety million, but we can go two and a half percent to ninety, ninety-three, but the estimated new growth, that million dollars, is that two and a half, or is that above two and a half percent on ninety million?
It's, the, in, in basic terms, the, the levy limit is calculated by taking the prior year limit-
Yeah.
-times two and a half percent-
Yeah.
Add new growth.
Okay, and add new growth.
So that, so on this slide that I put back up, it's ninety point three million, plus the two and a half percent, then plus the new growth, and those two numbers added to last year's levy limit, which give you ninety-three point six million.
Okay, and so what, that, that's more than actually two and a half percent, right?
Yes, yes, exactly.[1718.21]